The time has come for the Monday of 21, 2018, regular council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Moseo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velko.
First.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
President. And leading us in invocation will be Alderman Bolton. And for the Pledge of Ladies, Sergio, right after invocation, will come to the mic ladies on the Pledge of Ladies. Stand please.
May we pray. Almighty God, we just take this time to bless your name and honor you for who you are and your greatness and omnipotent power. Father God, you are the God that reigns over our governments of the earth. Therefore, we pray that the spirit, your spirit abide among us. And Lord, we submit to you, and we pray that we rule with wisdom and discretion. And we thank you for your presence and your leading and your guiding. In Jesus' name, if everyone agrees, say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for everyone attending. Last Wednesday, I called an emergency, an emergency Public Works meeting to update the Alderman, the residence, and the residents regarding the Washington Street sinkhole. Our staff and consultants will provide further details about the project as we move forward, but the situation highlights the importance of needing long-term plans for our infrastructure. Capital Improvement Plan we created last year was done in order to prepare for the half billion dollars of needed improvements to our aging infrastructure that the assessments identify. I want to take this time to thank our Public Works Department, our entire staff, and various other partners, and their willingness to work together as we try to repair and fix the Washington Street, Washington Street. Upcoming events, the Waukegan Police Department is hosting Coffee with a Cop this Wednesday, October 3rd, at the Home Depot on Belvedere, the Dunkin' Donuts at Fountain Square, and at Jewel Osko on Lewis and York House Road. Coffee with a Cop lets community members meet police, ask and learn more about their department. City of Waukegan Chamber of Commerce will host a lunch and learn on the topic of using social media for small businesses. This Wednesday, 11:30 a.m., at the library, at the library's Ray Bradbury Room. Sign up on the Chamber's website. The Waukegan Arts Council hosts the migrant quote project as part of the Health, of Health is Life, a community art series. This exhibit is free and open to the public on Fridays through Sundays, noon to 7:00 p.m., at the Urban Edge through, through October 14th. Also part of the community art series is the Art and Wellness Fair on Saturday, October 6th. Okay. At the sign-up church. Three Brothers Theater production, production of Night of the Living Dead kicks off the Halloween season. Based on the George Romero classic, it has been updated to be set in Waukegan in 2018. The show runs Fridays and Saturdays from October 5th through the 27th. The Genesee Theater's calendar is full of shows and entertainment, including The Amazing Jonathan, Genuine with special guest Corey Peeper, Little River Band, and the ultimate paranormal experience for kids, for both kids and adults. Check the website for details to purchase tickets. The Waukegan Fire Department is hosting an open house at Station 5, which is located at 30 to 21 North Green Bay Road on Saturday, October 6th, from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Take a two of the station and enjoy burgers and hot dogs with the fire fire dust. As always, check the city's website at waukeganil.gov and hashtag explore Waukegan for more events and activities. Motion by Alderman Tippett and second by Alderman Seager to approve the regular meeting minutes from May, September 17th, 2018. Any questions to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk.
You have three minutes, and the first gentleman is Jim Logan with Cafeteries.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. I am the coordinator of the Christmas gift program for Catholic Charities. I've been for about 20 years, and we provide, as many of you know, Christmas gifts to between 13,000 and 14,000 children and seniors every year through, through a adopt the family program that we've been running for, as I say, for over 25 years. We are in, find ourselves once again this year in desperate need of a space from which to receive and distribute the gifts. And so I'm here tonight to solicit any help that you could possibly give us, any influence you might have with any building owners in the area, to allow us to use our space. We need about 50,000 square feet. We asked that it be donated space where we're able to pay for the, for liability insurance as well as utilities, but we need it from about the 15th of November through Christmas. Essentially, we're just asking for, again, any assistance you can give us to allow us to, to help your constituents. I know that a lot of our, a lot of the families in Waukegan throughout Lake County very much rely on this as perhaps only, many of them, their only source of Christmas gifts for their kids. It's primarily children and fixed-income seniors that we provide this for. Does anybody have any questions? Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Tapasio Hernandez.
Hi, good evening. I'm here on behalf of myself and many other concerned and upset community members to request information and accountability in regard to the recent accommodations extended to Jeff Sessions in our home of Waukegan at the esteemed Genesee Theater on the afternoon of September 19th, 2018. He was extended a welcome and accommodations at Genesee Theater by our city with city police enforcement and restriction of our streets. Our own community members were denied access to their homes and businesses on Genesee Street without so much as a prior notification, so that Sessions could come and spread his very harmful and hateful opinions in efforts to diminish our community of diversity, made up of a majority of people of color, most of which are the worst affected by his police brutality and family separation policies and tactics. What is worse is that all of these accommodations were extended to him in secrecy of our very own community. Our elected city officials are supposed to represent us, not betray us with such a lack of transparency. If Jeff Sessions is allowed to voice his opinions about a community such as ours, then we, the people of Waukegan, deserve to be advised of such information ahead of time, so that we too may exercise our right to express our very own opinions in response. We were denied our right to organize and to use our freedom to assemble and express ourselves. It is too late now to lament about the past. Now we look to the future. We ask for answers and accountability about this betrayal of trust to our Waukegan community. We want answers or we don't.
Thank you. Israel Piranza.
Hello, Israel Piranza, Lake County Immigrants Advocacy, LCIA. I am here to just speak on what Jeff Sessions has done to this country as, he has split families apart, he has split thousands of families apart, split them hundreds and thousands of miles apart from one another. As a community leader, I just want to say why, or ask why he was here, why were we not told, and why was this not a public, uh, public, told to the public? I just want to know, again, why. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Dai.
Thank you, Jack Dai, 235 Gillette Avenue. I have two quick things to bring to the city council's attention. The first is I want to thank the police department. Last night, we had some random yahoos walking down Gillette Avenue about 12:30 in the morning, yelling back and forth in the rain, a car speeding up and down the street, and there was conversation of drugs and potential weapons involved, and the police department did come out and take care of that, so I want to thank you. The second issue I have is touches on the planning and zoning commission stuff I talked about last time. Last time I spoke about parking lots and about how we need to set example as a city. This time, I'd like to talk about, a little bit about parking on city streets. We do have ordinances involved. We can only park, you know, after midnight, between midnight and 6:00 a.m. on certain sides of the street. However, I think Waukegan is missing the point in a little bit of ways when we look at congestion on streets. Gillette Avenue, for example, the street I live on, is not wide enough to have cars on both sides of the street and have one car barely fit through, let alone passing traffic. I think we should look at our ordinances and possibly say, hey, even days, one side of the street, odd days, other side of the street. We only have so much right of way, so much concrete to put on cars, vehicles that are not supposed to be on the street all the time, but they are. So from my experience, I drive a full-size truck, and I have to fold my mirrors in some time to get down my street and make a three-point turn into my driveway. It's a little frustrating, and it's not just my street, there's Hull Court's the same way, there's a lot of places in the historic neighborhoods and along the north and south part of the city where we're a little too wide. We have a little bit too liberal of a space parking laws for the amount of space to traverse traffic. I have no doubt between, you know, snow routes, when we have snow happening, we have to get cars off the streets. However, there's no snow, and I can't get my car down whatever street I happen to be traveling down because there's cars on both sides, and someone's a block down trying to come the other way. It's very difficult. So I'd really like the city to reevaluate their ordinances in that route. I think it'd make everyone a little bit happier, a little bit easier to get along with. And once again, I do, would like to thank the police department for being very proactive on the incident that took place on Gillette Avenue last night. Thank you guys very much. Happy night.
Thank you.
Forgive me, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm surprised that there are so few people speaking tonight. I think I was the last one to sign up. I was just curious if the residents of Waukegan could have more information about the death that occurred to a 32-year-old black man in Lake County Jail recently? What further do we know, and what are we doing to prevent these things? I'm a nurse. I've taken care of prisoners in a hospital. Nobody died on my watch, so why did this 32-year-old die? I saw what was written in the paper, but I was curious what this day has to say about it and what we're going to do about it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. I'm just here today, I just wanted to thank, take time and extend our thanks and appreciation to those who came out from the community this past week and helped to make our open house the success that it was, so when, so I really appreciate that, because our own, our organization is only as strong as the community that gets involved and supported. As I said, I can open the doors, but an organization or the founder would be or not be what the community make in support of it. So I appreciate Mr., well, actually, Mr. Martinez.
Yes.
She came, she was out, Hernandez.
Right.
Who came out, supported, I'd like to thank Mr. Idenberg who made an appearance, and I also like to extend appreciation to our mayor who made an appearance also. So we're located at, once again, at 801 McAllister. Some of the new initiatives that we have in place is where we have a writing, where we always, we always have been doing writing and poetry, but we also have extended, we have our computer and technology program that we're extending to the community, and also our math tutoring. So if any of you are interested, or you have any students or youth that are interested to our number, we can reach that 773-510-1713, or you can come by 801 McAllister Avenue. So once again, thanks.
Thank you.
How you doing, Mayor? Yeah, I've been coming up here to the city council meetings with Mr. Peterson, but I've been conscious of something also in the city of Waukegan, North Chicago, design in this area of cities. I hear a lot of people talking about what they want to do and what needs to be done, but I hear very little about vision and purpose of the city. Growing up in this area, one thing that I learned early on, growing up in this area, was Lake County pride. I'm not seeing that anymore. I'm seeing a lot of selfishness, bitterness, white-biting, attacking one another. I don't see people talking to one another at all anymore about issues that are going on in the community, for instance, with the jobs, housing, employment. One of the things that made, I think, Lake County so great, and particularly Waukegan, was its diversity and its employment. I don't see that anymore. I don't see opportunities for small businesses to flourish. What I see is outsiders coming in, opening up businesses in our community, and taking our dollars out of the community and building their communities, and making their communities very, very beautiful and very, very prosperous, because they're attracting industry. I remember a couple of years ago, I sat and I talked with you, Mayor Cunningham, and the first thing I asked you was, what was your vision? What was your purpose behind doing it? And I really believe that that time when I talked to you, you had a love for Waukegan. And I think it's about time for everybody that's on this panel, because see, everybody wants to point their fingers at a couple of individuals, but not a couple of individuals make decisions. This is a group thing. This is the way our democracy is set up. We vote on things. We come together for the compromise, for the betterment of the people, not ourselves. So it's sort of like it saddens me to see, when I come up here, I don't hear anything talking about growth, I don't hear anything talking about employment. All I hear is a bunch of trained sales just clapping their hands. Do people want action? People want to see the people that they have elected do what they have elected them to do. And right now, sadly to say that, it's.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden.
I don't see.
Thank you. Benny Starks.
I just got a thing from the cell. I'm on the condition. Somebody breaking one night. I got the text message, I caught Waukegan police. They didn't respond, it took them half an hour.
You're speaking in the microphone.
It took them a half an hour to respond. I got the text message in here. I'm not going to shut you off. I supported you. I will never support you ever again, ever again. You don't even know nothing about DNF. You don't even know nothing about DNF. Why would you ask me about DNFs? When I done 21 years in prison. I'm talking to Jeff tomorrow. I got the texts in here where they would not respond. I am a homeowner in North Chicago. I'm a taxpayer. I would never support you. That's all I can say. I'm talking to Jeff tomorrow.
Thank you. Ralph Peterson, Jr.
Yeah, Mayor Cunningham, I can't believe that in, Mayor Cunningham, I can't believe that in this new labor contract, police officers with only a GED or a school, high school diploma will start at $65,000 base salary and move to about $100,000 in seven years. Let me do the math for you. This mean that they will receive an average of 6.5% increase plus 3% to 4% cost of living increase every year. People, that's about 11% to 13% a year for seven years, all for sitting on their rear end, some profiling minorities, receiving criminal kickbacks, and arresting and convicting the wrong Latinos. I grew the average income in Waukegan, and it's about $25,000. The average household income is about $46,000, and these guys believe they deserve between $65,000 to $100,000 a year? Now, I'm going to knock your socks down, citizens. With overtime, these guys are making between $150,000 and $200,000 a year, and 97% of them don't even live in Waukegan. So they take our money, profile our residents, some take our money, profile our residents, while believing that their Waukegan is not even good enough for them to live in. Let's take this all in. We taxpayers paid over $30 million lawsuit because these officers wrongfully arrested and locked up two Latinos for over 30 years. Now, citizens, our crooked mayor, and Terry Link, wink and nod over a union contract to pay these cops all this money that they are hiring now, but because the hand-picked racist cop who's handling the recruiting don't want black or brown female residents to know, over 96%, over 96% of the 150 officers are white in a city. That's 81% black and brown. That's unbelievable. Mayor, a few months ago, you added people to the civil service claiming, claiming it was to bring diversity to the police force. Where are the civil service members recruiting at? How come we have not heard from them? How come the churches haven't heard from them? And how come we haven't heard anything about hiring minority officers from our false black mayor? Rather than continue to lie, cheat, and steal, maybe you as a black mayor need to get out and help recruit women, minorities, veterans, and gays to this all-white male police force, Mr. first-time black mayor, instead of trying to buy their support.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Item four. We have a motion, a motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moseo, to approve a proclamation of fairness and equality proclamation, which will be read by the clerk, and they can do a voice, a voice vote is fine.
The Illinois Department of Human Rights Fairness and Equality proclamation. Whereas December 3rd, 2018, marks the 200th anniversary of Illinois becoming the 21st state in the Union, and whereas the city of Waukegan joins partners across the state in recognizing the Illinois bicentennial and celebrating what is born, built, and grown in Illinois throughout the year, and whereas the Illinois Department of Human Rights is celebrating the Illinois bicentennial by engaging at least 200 units of local government throughout the state of Illinois to join the Fairness and Equality Campaign, and whereas the Fairness and Equality Campaign aims to celebrate and reaffirm the land of Lincoln's rich history of valuing diversity, inclusion, and non-discrimination, and whereas by supporting the Fairness and Equality Campaign, the city of Waukegan hopes to inspire welcoming and inclusive community that fosters greater, greater understanding of others, and whereas the city of Waukegan is proud to support the Fairness and Equality Campaign and urges local units of government throughout the state to reaffirm that the campaign's core principles are essential to an open, thriving, and diverse community. Therefore, I, Sam Cunningham, mayor, do hereby proclaim that the city of Waukegan is proud to support the Fairness and Equality Campaign in celebration of the Illinois bicentennial and encourage all residents to recognize and honor the core principles of diversity, inclusion, and non-discrimination in Illinois.
All right, there's a first and second on the floor. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Most is passing catering. Item B, presentation by Waukegan to College seniors.
So good evening, evening. I'm not a Waukegan to College senior, but my name is Elise Dankers, and I'm the director of Waukegan to College. So thank you very much for inviting us to be with you this evening. This is a really special time in that our, our seniors are in the thick of things, getting ready for college. In fact, this group of, we have 13 seniors this year, and they've already submitted about 50 college applications, and they've been working really hard on that, and on October 23rd, they'll be participating in an event called Onsite, where they'll be getting admissions interviews and acceptances right then and there. And so we're gearing up for that big event. For those of you who may not be familiar with Waukegan to College, we are a college readiness program. We start working with students as young as fifth grade, and we work intensively with families. We've grown to 170 students, and we actually have some openings, and so we would welcome families and students to contact our office about applying to become part of our program. We are able to grow through our supporters. We have an amazing core of volunteers. Alderman Villalobos is on our board and one of our key volunteers. We have tutors, we have mentors who come to Waukegan and work intensively with our students, and we're grateful for their support, and we would welcome anybody who's interested in volunteering with us to contact us about helping students just be their academic best. We have two exciting new aspects to our program. One is that we have now 45 college graduates who have come through the program, and many of them have come back to form an alumni board. And so they're going to be working with our organization, working with the young professional groups in Waukegan to really help more students succeed. We also have a program called Parents Educating Parents, and we've got a team of 16 Waukegan to College parents that have been trained in curriculum that starts as early as middle school success, transition to high school, success in high school, and then path to college. And they're going to be going out to the community, whether that's at a PTO meeting or at a soccer club or at a church, to help the community learn a little bit about what they've been learning in Waukegan to College. And so we're really grateful to their dedication to work with us on that effort. We also have our 10th anniversary coming. It's hard for me to believe as the founding director that here we are 10 years in, and a lot of success to celebrate. It's going to be on October 20th at Glen Flora Country Club. We would welcome you to join us to celebrate. You could see Lisa May for tickets or David. And we also are looking for sponsors, so if you know a business that would like to be in front of about 250 guests, we would welcome you to invite them to be a sponsor for our program. We have planned to blanket Waukegan with posters like this, English on one side, Spanish on the other, and we want to see a sea of purple in Waukegan, supporting these kids on their path to college. We'll be going out to businesses to ask for a $25 sponsorship to hang one of these in their window. So again, if you know anybody who could help us, we would welcome that. So again, thank you for inviting us. I want to invite one of our students, Mary Ann, up to share a little bit about her experience so you get a sense of what we do.
My name is Mary Ann Chui, and I'm a senior at Waukegan High School and part of the Waukegan to College program. I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me speak about what this program has done for me. I consider myself to be a very busy person, and Waukegan to College has provided me with the structure I need in order to apply to selective colleges. They've created an environment that helps me think about things like test scores and personal statements early on, so I have time to prepare for them. An example of this is the ACT prep course I took in February through April during my junior year. The course helped me figure out which categories I need to focus on in order to improve my overall score. I went to sessions twice a week and worked on homework that was assigned during those sessions outside of that time. With their help, I achieved an ACT. With their help, I achieved an ACT score of 31. Another asset, uh, Waukegan to College has provided me is a personal mentor to help me through the college application process. My mentor is a former, former English teacher, which has really helped me in crafting my personal statement for the Common Application. She has helped me with keeping me on track and focused on the messages I want to send to college admission boards. She's also suggested certain colleges that she thinks might interest me. I am very grateful for her help and she has made the college application process that much smoother. Over the summer, Waukegan to College had, gave rising seniors the opportunity to go to Boston to visit colleges at almost no cost to the students. We stayed there for three days, visiting colleges and getting a feel for city life. We visited Suffolk University, Northeastern University, Boston College, Boston University, Tufts University, and MIT. It gave me a chance to visit selective colleges on the East Coast, something I probably wouldn't have been able to do without Waukegan to College. I have applied to Tufts University and I plan on applying to MIT later on. I am grateful for all the opportunities and guidance Waukegan to College has provided for me. My summer before entering my senior year has been a productive one thanks to them.
Your Honor, Your Honor.
Yes, sir. Alderman Moseo.
As a side note, I'd be remiss if I did not say also, not only is she smart, but she's also pound for pound one of the strongest girls in the state of Illinois. She's on the par- Mary Ann, you know I had to do it, come on now. She was on a parlor team that took second in the state, uh, last year, and this year I think we're going to be able to take first if I can rearrange the lineup a little bit. But, uh, smart and strong is a, a very good combination.
You're going to read the names and I'm going to present the-
Can you have them?
Yes. Well, I think we better take them over here. Maybe let me read them and then you come here, so I don't, they're in order, do whatever.
I don't think she could make it. Bama, Bama. Vania Torres. Juan Zaniga.
I just want to say this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a photo, but let me say this. You know, oftentimes, and I say this all the time when our, when our young men and young ladies are here representing, we don't say enough of what our young ladies and men are doing in our community. Often, we only hear about the negative they're doing. Here are some young ladies and some young men who've committed themselves for excellence and being leaders and being successful. Not only just Waukegan City Council, I thought, I thought I saw the other day where we had some young ladies who helped on the fire. We want you to know that we are proud of you. Continue with your success.
Yes.
Forget about the distractions. This is the reward for it. Keep it up. Thank you. As I always say, happy for you, proud of you. Take care. All right, here we go. Parents, ready?
Yes.
We're going to get tighter.
Don't forget, I have to reserve here.
Smile, everybody.
Jane?
Yep, we're here.
All right, now we gotta look for Jane.
All right, we're all looking right here. We're smiling, we're happy. One more.
All right, everybody, give a round of applause. Alderman May and Alderman Villalobos, would you like to say something on Waukegan to College?
Sure. Would I go first?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, I just want to say it's been an honor. I've been on the board, uh, for a couple of years now. Um, one of my second, my, my second year of my, I'm being a board member, but I actually did volunteer with Waukegan to College when it first, uh, started as a, uh, reading tutor. So, my connection with Waukegan to College starts 10 years ago. Um, as I progress as a human and seeing the organization progress too, it's really proud of this moment and proud of all the students here, um, some of them I do know, uh, through various activities I had with Waukegan to College and some of my other volunteerism. Um, young man Ace over here, uh, just met him recently when I was substitute teaching. Uh, I appreciate you. Uh, this young man, uh, I'm a sub in the district and I'm going to the classroom and he just graciously comes up to me and says, "Hi, can I help you with anything? Um, with doing attendance, anything like that?" And I was like, "Oh, no, thank you so much. I appreciate that." And I, you know, told him, "Go take a seat, I have my, my own spiel that I do." Um, but such a just kind-hearted young man right there. Um, and it made an impression and I'm glad to see him here today, a part of Waukegan to College. Um, I was not aware that he was a member of that, but I'm so happy of that. Aurora, her and her family are members of the ward. We've worked on various volunteer opportunities. Uh, Jocelyn was our former Miss Junior Waukegan. Vania, I know from, uh, my time at the Southern Line. Um, some of the other students who I might have had as a substitute teacher, you may have, you may have had me as a sub, but, um, again, it's just, it's, it's very proud. And I talk to people now about Waukegan to College. I actually start saying Waukegan through college, um, 'cause the, the program does help students graduate college. They don't just say, "You're in college and good luck with your future." They do the peer mentoring, they do the touch points with the students while they're in school, while they're in college to ensure that they graduate. And to me, that's the biggest key that the, that this organization does that I haven't seen others really strive to, or that they're striving to get there but not there yet. So, they're making a really good headway. Um, you're graduating seniors, you know, you already have your, probably your part of yours set up for next year and kind of, as you decide what schools you go to. So, um, again, I, I'm just proud of, uh, the group, proud of the students here, um, a lot of great people. For those of you that I do not know, I look forward to meeting you in the future. Um, yeah, again, still great, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman May.
I won't belabor the point, but, uh, just congratulations. I've met so many wonderful kids through Waukegan to College over the years and it's one of my favorite organizations in Waukegan. So, kudos to all of you. I look forward to watching you in the future. Um, after college, please come back to our community and help us make Waukegan a great place, okay? We want you to come back. That's the message I want to drive home. And I do know some, um, young people who came through Waukegan to College who are back making a difference, um, Josue Gilberto, um, it's, it's wonderful. So, congratulations and good luck in college.
Thank you. All right, we have some information by the Waukegan Society for upcoming Tour of Homes event. And without further ado, Mr. Harry Kane, come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, my name is Harry Kane, 614 North Genesee. You've seen me here before. This is a tough act to follow.
Yes.
A, a lot of high school students are members of the historical society as a public member.
Yes.
Um, we are, I'm here to invite everyone to the 48th Annual Tour of Homes this Sunday, one to five. Uh, this is the 50th anniversary of the historical society, so we've tried to make it a special one this year. There are four homes on the tour plus the museum. Um, all of the homes were built in the 1870s, including the museum. Uh, all but one were built by the same builder, the Porter Brothers. So, you'll see a lot of similar architectural, um, elements in each one of the homes. I think you'll enjoy it. Um, this, the video tonight won't show up until Sunday night, so you have to spread the word yourself. We would really like for you to come. Tickets are available at Ace Hardware, uh, at the museum, at the Jack Benny Center, and online at Eventbrite. So, we would really, this is our largest fundraiser of the year and we reach out to the schools. Thousands and thousands of students benefit every year from the programs we offer in the schools. Walking tour, cemetery walk, and with our partners, the City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Park District, you know, we're, we're going to go after another 50 years and, and I think you'll really enjoy the tour if you come this Sunday. Please support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it. Item five, there being none. Item six, insurance committee. We had a motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moseo, authorize a proper city officials to settle a police department workers' compensation claim, claim number C 645-17-101 342-01 for a total amount of $58,138.50. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye. Judiciary Committee, Alderman May, I'm sorry about that.
I'm like, you're going to do it all the night.
Correction, I was supposed to ask Alderman Taylor to do insurance committee. I was just looking down at the motion. I apologize, Alderman. Did I do a good job, though? I did a good job.
It's your roots, you're, you're going back, right?
Yeah, you're going. Sorry about that. Alderman, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the Judiciary Committee has one item tonight. Um, it's, uh, the Judiciary Committee recommends approval of an ordinance for zoning calendar number 2574, which is a conditional use permit for a hospital at 2615 Washington Street. The City of Waukegan's Department of Planning and Zoning has, had received an application for a conditional use permit for a 146-bed hospital at, um, the former Vista West or St. Therese, depending what era you're from, uh, that will provide inpatient and outpatient mental health and behavioral health services. The application requests the renovation of the existing medical office building into a 9,000-square-foot expansion so that the use is similar to the current use, um, since they're expanding the footprint is why they had to, uh, apply for a conditional use permit. And, uh, we received many letters of recommendation for this project and I so move.
The motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Villalobos, are there any other questions to the motion? We, we, I'm sorry, ma'am, we, we can't do questions, there was a committee, committee meeting. Um, maybe afterwards I or the Chairman of Judiciary can answer any questions if you may. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye. Thank you, Alderman May. Uh, public, public safety, Alderman Moseo.
Thank you. Your Honor, the White House, your Honor, May. Mo- motion to authorize a proper city officials to adopt as presented an ordinance amending parking zones established on County Street in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Velko, any, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Uh, item B, motion authorize a proper city officials to adopt as presented an ordinance amending prohibitive parking on Ernie Kruger Circle and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman May, any questions to the motion? Other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C, motion authorize a proper city officials to adopt as presented an ordinance amending prohibitive parking on Brookside Avenue and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Seager, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
And item B, motion authorize a proper city officials to purchase three, 2019 Ford police interceptor SUVs from Marl Brothers Ford with a total price not to exceed $92,085. The purchase completed via State of Illinois bid contract 401-8503. Payment for the vehicles will be made from line item 296-629-626493 and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Villalobos, any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye. Motion's passing, Karen, that's it?
That's it, Your Honor.
On the public safety, item nine, no old business, new business. Item eight, motion by Alderman Velko, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve regular payroll dated September 28th, 2018, a total amount of $1,534,363.10. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye. Item B, motion by Alderman Velko, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve in the payment dated October 1, 2018, a total amount of $1,403,403.837,099. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye. All right. Motion, uh, motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Seager, to approve local 150 comp time cash out date, dated September 28th, 2018, in a total amount of $1,632,059. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
All right. On the next one, I'm gonna put the motion on the floor. The motion by the Chair of Public Works will be Alderman Newsom. And second, Alderman Seeger. Reading the motion because it's been amended as it is on our agenda. Corporation Counsel, take, Robert Long, will read the motion as it should be.
This is the amended motion with the figures that came in just a few moments before we started our council meeting. Motion approving a contract with Camp Noah and Sons, Inc., on a timely material basis and in an amount not to exceed the current rough estimate of one million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars without additional council approval. In order to address necessary repairs or replacements relative to the Washington Street culvert stormwater system, water main, sewer main, and other ancillary repairs. Funding from twenty eighteen bond funds line item three oh seven one three zero seven two seven seven zero six. Due to the bona fide emergency, urgent nature, and high degree of skill required for this contract, a waiving of the bidding requirement for city code section two dash four five eight one subsection I two, and a waiver of the local hiring ordinance are hereby granted.
That's the motion on the floor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please. Okay, I'll add that, too.
Okay.
The motion has, is first and second on the floor and at its amended form. Are there any questions? Other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
All right. I'm going to add this, just for, once it's in the record. Our new risk manager will also be submitting a property insurance claim with our current carrier in reference to this project or unfortunate situation that is happening in our community. So Alderman, that will be a part of the record, so Kate will be doing that effective immediately. Okay? Item E. Motion, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Moseo. To approve outdoor special events, stand against the stigma, Lake County Health Department STI program in Urban Edge, oh, at Urban Edge on December first, from ten a.m. to three p.m. That the sponsor has applied under the directive of non-city government use, city-owned building and venues. Are there any questions to the motion?
Question, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor. Yes, ma'am.
I assume we've done this in the past, too, that this particular walk, 'cause we have no officers designated for this. And since it involves some major roads, I was just, I assume we've done it, and it's been okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, I just don't remember it. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, this is my third, I think it's the third time we've done this. Third, fourth?
This is the third time we've done it, no, second time at Urban Edge.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, three times. I thought it was at Urban Edge. I thought it was all three, but yeah.
Okay.
But we will certainly keep a watchful eye on this.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I got it confused with the next one. I'm sorry. That's why. This one is fine. Sorry.
All right. All right, then. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Velko, to approve outdoor special events. Twenty eighteen Walk for Life by Most Blessed Trinity on August, October the sixth, from three forty-five p.m. to six p.m. Started at four fifty Keller Avenue and ending at five oh eight Grand Avenue. The sponsors applied under directive non-city government use, city-owned buildings and venues. Motion for Alderman Taylor.
This is where I had the question. Is, has this walk happened before? I'm sure it has.
Yeah, several. I think my eighteen years as an Alderman, there were, it was every year.
Oh, my God, yeah. It's, yeah, after long I've been up here.
And normally, I think it's on the road on Keller that they get into the park district and they walk through there, so it's never, it really.
Well, there was an alternative route on there, too, and I was just concerned.
They used to use Rice Field for a while, and then they used Beaver, Beaver Park for a while. They didn't have this Walk for Life forever.
Okay.
Yeah, and then when they moved to, when Most Blessed Trinity moved over to Keller Street, they exited right in their kind of area there throughout the park district, so. Yeah, but, but I still think our officers, and Chief helped me out, I think there was a car kind of in the area at the time. Yeah. Yeah. That's what I remember from it.
That's what my question was. We do have a car in the area.
Yeah, yeah. I think we have a couple cars, to be honest, in here. It just depends on how much traffic that day is going on. Normally, so late on, I think it's on a Sunday. Is it on a Sunday?
It's a Sunday.
Yeah, but you asked the question, yes. They're very mindful of that. All right, other questions?
Comments?
Alderman Villalobos.
We should probably notify the petitioner, 'cause on both option routes they proposed, they're using that stretch of Washington as their, as the route that's been under construction currently.
Yeah.
So they should just be notified that they're gonna have to do the detour or transition with that space as it moves, looks like.
Yeah. And it's part of this, actually, the whole process, it goes through all of departments, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, and whoever department it affects. That's, that's who say, "Yeah, you need to it," so as we keep a watchful eye on Washington Street, we'll let them know in real early in the process. Matter of fact, we're letting them know now because we don't even.
It's the Sunday that's transpiring.
Yeah, well, we'll get it out to them, too.
And, yeah, the application was submitted before this event happened.
Right. And I'm very certain, we've already spoken with them, but we'll make a special phone call to Hugo over there and let them know.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velko.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seeger.
All right. Audience, not audience, ordinances none. Closing items. Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moseo.
Thank you. Just a couple things. I have had some inquiries. The woman that talked at audience time about Attorney General Sessions. I can say, I'm sure all the other one we can tell you, I was called that morning to be notified that he would be at the Genesee Theater. I would, I'm not gonna put Corporation Counsel on the spot right now about the legalities of it. I don't know if we could have stopped it anyway, or what it would have been. But there was a lot of people in the community that I talked to that inquired about it. I don't know if you can stop a sitting Attorney General or a President or a Congressman or a Senator from coming anywhere. I don't know that. You have to find out the legalities of it, but I know there was a lot of people that were taken aback that he was here with the current climate that I guess he presents. So I would like some information on it, if possible. So, I mean, I think the people of Waukegan need to have an answer as to why he was, why he was here. Now, again, it wasn't a city-sponsored event. I might at least, at least correct on that. The city didn't sponsor that, so.
That part's true.
That, that part's true, counsel.
Yeah, and the, the reason for the short notice is very simple. It's Secret Service. They don't tell you.
Yeah.
Before he lands, they come in, they swoop in, they take over, and that's it.
So if anybody wants to at least file a complaint about that, I would suggest you talk to the Secret Service. I'm sure, I'm sure they won't answer you. So, but as far as any other details about it, if we could get some that would, I think, that would put at ease some people in the community. The second thing, the hospital, it's a good thing. Obviously, that's a large stretch of land. It's been sitting there forever and really not doing anything. But I think people need to understand that this is a for-profit hospital, and I'm not begrudging them for coming in here and fixing that up and making it a viable business at all. But I think most of us know, some of the most vulnerable people with mental health problems are people that can't pay. And we, as a society and as a community, as, as a country, have to try to figure out what we're gonna do with these people that have all, have mental health issues. Because we're losing that battle really fast. I mean, you can, if you, I'm sure if you want to talk to the Chief about it, he can give you, talk to you for days about the problems that not only this police force has, but probably every police force in America has to deal with people that have mental health issues. And of course, this hospital's gonna come in and it's gonna deal with it, but if, unless I'm wrong, it's a for-profit hospital. So people that can't pay or don't have insurance, as far as I know, are not gonna be able to go there to get treatment. I may be wrong. But again, I think we need to understand that. It's not gonna be somewhere where the police can pick up somebody for mental health and, and they can bring them over there. If they can't pay, they're a business. They're a for-profit hospital. They're not, so. That people need to understand. Unless I'm wrong, unless anybody up here can tell me different, that's, that's what I've heard, and that's what I've researched. So we need to understand that, but as, as a city, as a country, and all that, we have got to try to figure out what you're gonna do with all these mental health issues because it's, it's not going away. And again, some of the people that have these that are the most vulnerable and, and the people that just, they don't have any means. Part of the, so we need to think about that. Thank you.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yeah, two things I just want to mention. Number one, part of my staying engaged with the community, I went to the homecoming for the first time, oh, no. I went to the homecoming parade for the first time in many years, and it was very pleasant. I enjoyed walking. I did, I was part of the alumni portion of the parade, which I invite anybody who's a Waukegan alumni, please, next year, participate. There was like six of us as alumni from the high school, and there's definitely way more than that, this community. So that, that was a little disheartening to see, so a few people come out for that part of it, but the parade overall was nice. Unfortunately, our high school didn't win the homecoming game. But overall, it was a good day, and I really enjoyed the amount of people that were present for the parade and the game itself. There is a lot of support for the community that does exist here. And I keep feeding into that and try to show people that it's, that it's there. The second thing I want to bring up is the Jeff Sessions visit. I was notified by a business owner who was upset because all the parking was being taken over. For those who would know, downtown Waukegan, the parking downtown has been issued for many years. As the Alderman for the bulk of that, of downtown, I'm still working on trying to find some resolutions for that. So anyways, a business owner called me, and I was informed that Jeff Sessions was coming. I checked and verified, 'cause I was like, really? That doesn't, I wouldn't hear that, so, true. There was a delegation of people that were protesting against his visits. I did go to that protest in the small period of time that I had, between subbing classes, to support that. I, it was interesting to me, the juxtaposition of our community. Here we are, we have on one block, a gentleman who's anti-immigrant, advocates for separation of families of migrants. And just a block west at Urban Edge was the migrant quilt project that I mentioned last time during council. And for those who aren't aware about the migrant quilt project at the Urban Edge, it's a project that, that shows the, depicts the deaths of people that are migrants trying to come to the U.S. that die in this pit, there's a region in, I'm sure I've read the state already, Arizona, I want to say. And there's about three thousand four hundred known deaths, but there's others that they, they estimate that's probably double that number with the unknowns. So here we are, we have on one block of Waukegan, a gentleman who's completely against immigrants and what they stand for. And a block away from him is the, they're trying to let people be informed about this issue that's going on in the, in the country. It was just an interesting juxtaposition they have with each other. And that migrant quilt project, again, you know, if you have the time to go check it out, go check it out, look at the information. It's very heartrending. And then to see, like, here's a gentleman that supports this type of movement in our country, was a really, again, I'm having difficulty expressing how I feel and think about it. Overall, I think it was bad that we had Jeff Sessions in Waukegan. And again, I did support the protesters against him. But yeah, again, it's just another shitty situation of our community that we have. Sorry, I'm rambling. I feel like I am right now, so I'll just stop right there. Thank you, everyone.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I have two things. I've received a few phone calls regarding the intersection of Lewis and Glen Flora, and emails. Some people think that it's gonna stay exactly like it is. They are not finished with that intersection. They are gonna come back and grind that, the total intersection and repave it. They should start the work in the next couple, two, three weeks, but it will be done before the end of the season, before winter sets in. So I wanted to put that word out because there's been some misinformation that we're gonna leave that like it is through the winter, and we're not gonna do anything with it, but it will be repaved. And the other thing I have is welcome Dee Dee's discount. We have a new store in the Lewis Avenue Plaza. They opened their doors last Thursday, and they had their grand opening Saturday morning. And they're already giving back to this community. They gave a twenty-five hundred dollar donation to the Boys and Girls Club of Lake County, and also twenty-five hundred dollars to Clearview School, and which they partner. They're in partnership with a organization called First Book. So I'd like to welcome Dee Dee's discount and go visit that store. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just, just want to encourage everyone to support Waukegan to College at their ten-year anniversary celebration. I'll just repeat, October twentieth at five p.m. at Glen Flora Country Club, which is in the seventh ward. And I just wanted to go back over audience time. Oh, Ms. Strasky, the, the Lake County Jail is not under the city's purview, so we have no information on that. We don't. So that, across the street or the county board, those would be the correct representatives to talk to about that, or the Lake County Sheriff's Office. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. No, no problem. And I don't think we're gonna beat the Jeff Sessions, Sessions issue to death. We, we didn't know. I certainly, him being in town doesn't represent any statement from this body up here, certainly not me. And I believe he was here on a federal police training type of a program, to the best of my knowledge. But we have no, no forewarning, and certainly that's not this body supporting Jeff Sessions. At least, I'll speak for myself, so. That's all I have. Thanks.
Alderman Velko.
Pass.
Alderman Taylor.
I just want to remind everybody that this Wednesday is the Coffee with the Cop out at Fountain Square. And then Thursday at eight twenty-five in the morning is the Ribbon Cunning at Aldi at Fountain Square. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to, I'm, I, I want to give a shout out. I'm excited about the mental health program that's opening at, on Washington. As a clinical addiction counselor, which I am full-time, and a mental health specialist, I, I'm just glad we are addressing and opening this facility because they're most, they're the most misunderstood. They're the ones that, they fill out prisons, they fill out addiction treatments, so I just want to give a shout out for that. I'm glad. Also, out in the foyer, there's some flyers, and this is about us as a community addressing the opiate addiction overdose problem that we have in Lake County. The statistics says that a hundred and ninety-six Americans that die from overdose every day. So the event will be tomorrow at six p.m. at one nine three five one West Washington Street, Grace Lake. The flyer will be out there. Thank you.
Alderman Seeger.
One thing I'd like to, to say tonight, I want to thank Mike Hewitt and his staff members, all of Public Works, all the rest of staff members, the mayor, for all being involved in this Washington Street repair. It's a major repair. It's got to be fixed, but you guys, you guys are handling it great. I thank you very much. That's it.
Two things. One, I don't want to just piggyback on Alderman Moseo. This was an event that was not sponsored by the City of Waukegan, Jeff Sessions. Let's be clear. It was an event, I think the Department of Justice, was the Department of Justice in the AG's office, held any, held a training for police officers, and they rented out the Genesee Theater. And that is where we're at. To someone who said that we never gave notice to the business owners, when we received the information that the gentleman was coming, we, it was a request to block off a portion of Genesee Street, it was at Clayton going north up to Grand. Those businesses were notified. So I, 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 if, if there wasn't, young lady, please let me know who they are, and I will personally go over there and, you know, apologize for that. But our, our, our police department knocked on the doors and let them know this was happening. And sometimes when these, I guess, when, I think Chaney was here one time, touched down at the Waukegan Airport. And that's where they land in, at the Waukegan Airport, they shut down certain things, and we're, you know, we just accommodate them, and that's just the way it is. But to- But to Alderman May's point, certainly, have you noticed the mayor didn't attend, none of the Aldermen attended? What the rhetoric that Mr. Sessions and others say throughout the country to incite people, and certainly to disconnect families, that is not the purpose of Waukegan, that is not the spirit of Waukegan. Never has been, I don't think ever will be. But there are some things that are out of our control, so we manage them the best that we can. And while it is certainly hurt, hurtful, what I am happy about is that not only myself, this entire body up here, but more importantly, the City of Waukegan has spoken up against such nasty talk about people. And you do that because that is the spirit of this community. And it will continue to be that spirit. So I thank you for bringing it to our attention, but what we should appreciate is the support you have unanimously by everyone up here who has, who are the leaders of this community. And if things come again and we get notice, we try, at least I do, and our staff, try to get that information out to the legislative body. Thank you again for your patience and understanding regarding the individuals coming in, but in America, everybody has rights, good or bad, they have rights. With that being said, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Taylor, to adjourn. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. See you next council meeting, everybody.